I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick.
Here.
Ms. Karstoffen. Mr. Bax.
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Here.
And Mrs. Sequin.
Here.
Okay, would everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, that was so much better than those Zoom meetings. Okay, welcome to the September 16th, 2020 Board Meeting. I'd like to introduce our group up here. To my right is Board Member Jim Bax. To his right is Board Member Elaine Sequin. I am Greg Elick. Absent today is our Board Member Annie Karstoffen. She's at a funeral, so keep her in your thoughts and prayers. To her left is Board Member Mike Gebhardt. To his left is our Superintendent Anne Schloss. And to her left, our award-winning Treasurer, Joy Klickinger. Okay, I believe we do not have any visitors today or any presentations. So first thing on the agenda is the OSBA Conference. And we will need a delegate and an alternate for the conference. And I believe this year we will have Mike Gebhardt as our delegate and Jim Bax as our alternate. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some of them.
I have a motion by Board Member Sequin. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Board Member Bax. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Sequin.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, any Board Member discussion items, Mr. Bax? Any construction updates today?
None at this time, sir, other than it was just a feat in and of itself to get three buildings open and running.
No.
And with a number of things that went on, so I guess I would have to commend the contractors, the architects, and certainly our maintenance staff and some of the people who can participate in that to get all that done under the gun in a lot of cases. So it's fantastic, and there's still some things to do, still some little things on the punch list, but we're running.
Okay. We would like to probably down the road, maybe have some presentations about our new schools, maybe whether it's our principals talk a little bit, or maybe even have board meetings on the road or something. But since we are so proud of the new schools and everything that's going on here in the community, it's a very exciting time here in Illyria School District.
Mr. President, I wonder if you wanted to discuss who would be attending the Capitol Conference and if we want to pass that motion?
Sure. Did we miss that one?
It's number three, yes.
Okay, so who is going to be attending, I guess? Is that the question?
Well, it's virtual. We don't have to do this tonight. Everybody's been getting information through OSBA, and it's $175, I think, this year. It's just whether anybody wants to do it virtual or not.
And when would you need to know for sure from the Board members?
I think we need to know right just by the end of October, so the second Board meeting in October.
Okay. Well, I'll make sure that I contact personally each one of the Board members and find out who exactly is going and not, and then we'll make sure it gets back to the agenda.
Okay.
Do I have to have our reservations for the hotel in by then?
Well, that was really the only reason to have the commitment so early before was to get their hotel rooms. So now it's a little bit more lax as far as that goes.
Okay. We'll definitely find out and let you know for sure. Mr. Gebhardt, did you have something to share?
Yeah, a couple of things. Somebody approached me about why have we never thanked the voters of Illyria? We've got big signs out, or, you know, we've got our names on there, we've got the architects' names up, but we've never thanked the voters of Illyria. I was wondering if we could make some big signs like we have up front coming in for the schools?
Sure, to remind them. Sure, I know we did it back at the time of the bond issue, but that's a great idea to do. I know some of the marquees, is that what they're called, are almost done, and we could do some banners and things. Amy, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, we did do banners when the bond issue passed. However, I actually just ran some ads in a couple of Illyria County newspapers. I just ran an ad for that very reason. There's a whole payback coming out in our Pioneer Press we keep publishing on Friday, so we are working on that.
Okay, good. One other thing, at the game Friday, I thought everything went fairly well. Second half, though, I did notice that people were kind of on the 50-yard line, were getting closer, and the masks were coming off.
We did send the security officers up there a couple of times to remind people. Yeah.
And they went up, and he told one guy to move, and they left, and the guy moved right back.
Moved right back, yes.
So anyways.
Yes, we will keep on that. Thank you, Mr. Gebhardt.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gebhardt. So any other, with no other items, we'll move along on the agenda. The minutes for the September 2nd, 2020 meeting have been posted. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Board Member Bax. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Gebhardt. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Mrs. Sequin.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, Madam Treasurer, do you have a action items report for us this evening?
The items that I have this evening, I have, first of all, my monthly financial report for the month of August. And then we also have some very sizable donations that I would like to just comment on. United Way of Greater Lorraine County gave $1,800 to the Communications Office for donation of school supplies and backpacks. And then we had donations of, a donation of $30,000 from the Community Foundation Dorothy and Elizabeth King Memorial Charitable Fund. That's for hotspots. Also for hotspots was a donation of $20,000 from the Stalker Foundation. We had a donation of $24,250 from the Nordson Foundation for hotspots. The Nord Family Foundation also donated $40,000 to assist in the purchase of hotspots. And then the Stalker Foundation made their second of three installments of $450,000 for the STEAM education and preschool at Hamilton Elementary.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the Treasurer action items?
Some of them.
I have a motion by Board Member Sequin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Gebhardt. Questions and comments? I have a question on, we've laid out the dollars that have been donated on behalf of the foundations for the hotspots. Does that include computers if a student out in the community needs a computer for the virtual school this year?
For the foundations, it was strictly hotspots. We do have some other grants through the state on connectivity and the CRF coronavirus that can also be Chromebooks. So we do have that covered also, so both.
So we do have dollars available there?
Yes.
And are we, is that communicated out there? Are the families aware of this and the dollars?
Yes, we have, every student has a Chromebook if needed right now.
Okay, good, okay. Because I was specifically asked about those dollars, so I just want to make sure.
Yep, yep. Every student has a Chromebook, and we just are starting our second or third wave of hotspot distribution.
Wonderful, that's outstanding. And that's awfully generous of the foundations for supplying us with those dollars. So we're forever grateful for that, so. Any other questions or comments?
No.
With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Sequin.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion approved. Any Treasurer other items this evening, Madam Treasurer?
Yes, I have a couple routine items, permanent appropriations, and the amended certificate, both for fiscal year '21. These are both routine items, but I'd still like to say a couple words about it. Permanent appropriations have to be approved as of September 30th, and contrary to the title, these appropriations can be changed all through the year. Possibly more this year than in the past due to the times that we're in and not knowing, period, I guess. I didn't provide a comparison to last year's expenditures because I found it very confusing. To start out with, we have had our state funds cut, and we received federal dollars. And it's possible that some of the federal dollars that we received, they're, it's possible they could be recalled. So it's, there's a whole lot of issues going on with a whole lot of different things. We have been able to shift some of our general fund expenditures to some of these grants. However, we are experiencing additional costs. Some of those costs have been covered by, like the generous donors that we just spoke about. In a couple of months, I hope to have settled, I hope things settle down a bit so that when I bring the five-year forecast, that we can explain in further detail and just have things a little more settled than what they currently are. Having said that, I do want to say just a couple of things. Within each fund type, there's individual funds. Approval is at the fund type level as needed by both the county and the state auditors. And each one of the funds, I've described them before, what's in each one of the fund categories, fund types. However, the big ones are, the ones that have changed are the special revenue funds. That's where some of the elementary, secondary, school, emergency relief fund, ESER funds, are. We've also got the CRF funds, the coronavirus relief funds. We've got student wellness dollars in there. The '19 fund holds all the donations that we receive from the foundation. Besides all of that, the food service has been, is in the enterprise funds. It's the majority of that fund, and that number will also fluctuate. But one thing I did want to say, that food service has been running quite well. And, I mean, financially, as far as the rest goes, Brian could probably speak to that better than me. But kudos to all the efforts from Aramark and all of our food service employees, because that financially is running quite well right now. Then the estimated receipts are, also follow the same course that the appropriations do. And those are the comments I had.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the Treasurer other items this evening?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Board Member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Bax. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mrs. Sequin.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion carries. OFCC, I don't think we have anything on that this evening, do we? But obviously, we're elated that we did finalize the swap of the properties, signed the paperwork yesterday, and officially, there was an article in the paper, pretty nice, pretty nice job back there that was in there, and details the history of the actual swap, the properties, our three properties going to the city in exchange, and all the dollars we're going to save. But I believe, I'm going to work with Amy, and we're going to get some more information out through the paper about everything involved with that. So looking forward to doing that, and there'll be more information to come on that. Superintendent action items, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Elick. First of all, I'd like to ask for the approval of the payment of stipends as listed below. Also, to approve the amended STEPS Education Group contract for the 2021 year. To approve the PSI St. Jude contract for the 2021 year. To approve the revised administrative contract benefits. And what this is, is just to match the benefits that was given, as you know, same as the certified contract that was approved a meeting or two ago for the EEA members. Also, to approve the purchase of 300 mobile internet hotspots that we were just talking about. And that concludes my action items at this time.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Superintendent action items?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Board Member Bax. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Board Member Sequin. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question. On the St. Jude, I noticed that there, we aren't giving them a guidance on a remedial teacher? Am I in the right place?
Each, yeah. Each year it changes depending on their needs and their requests. It's their money, so they decide what they need.
Oh, okay.
And for that year. This year, Mrs. Blatt might be able to speak to that more, but it's just really based, and it may be different this year with their, if they're virtual or because of their hybrid, they may have changed.
So this is good for here. They can't come back and say, okay, we need one more.
At any time, they can change their, what they want to contract, as long as they have funds within their money.
Yeah, those guidelines that they have within, like their allowable expenditures, and they have to do or not do.
Okay.
And they tell us what they want, it's not a big deal.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mrs. Sequin.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion carries. Madam Superintendent, Personnel action items this evening.
Thank you, yes. First of all, to approve the resignation of the certified staff listed below. Also, to approve the unpaid leave of absence of the following certified staff. To approve the appointment of the following certified staff. As you can see, we are still in the hiring phase with new enrollment, and we have some tutors and ELL tutors. To approve the supplemental contracts for the following certified staff. To approve the athletic supplemental contracts for the following certified classified and non-employee staff. To approve the following game workers for athletic services. To approve the appointment of the following classified staff members. To approve the one-year limited contract for the following classified staff. To approve the one-year limited contract for the following security officers as detailed below. I do want to say one thing on that, if I could. As you can see, there are some that work for athletics. Because of the difference, and I had written you a note that it was changing with less students at the buildings, we are going down to Officer Figula, who's been with us a long time, he's an Illyria grad, is going to be working as one of the security officers in the district, paid out of Title IV grants, safety and security. So I did want to update you on that. Also, to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Illyria City Schools and the support staff for the Illyria City Schools. And that concludes my Personnel action items.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the Superintendent's Personnel action items?
Some of them.
A motion by Board Member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second by Board Member Sequin. Any questions or comments?
Just one comment, I think Joseph G. Figula, Figular, on the athletic officer.
Oh, the second, the second one.
I think.
Thank you.
It's the same person, I.
Same person.
Yeah.
Second one, yep, thank you, Mr. Gebhardt.
Okay, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Mrs. Sequin.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, should we move right to the Superintendent report, or is there anything?
Well, we have one more appointment.
Okay.
And it's your favorite one of the year, Mr. Gebhardt. To approve the appointment of the following staff, certified staff member for ELL tutor of Nancy Gebhardt.
Here we go. Well, do I have a motion on this one? I guess I should look down this way, huh?
Some of them.
Wow. I must like you. Okay, I have a first by Board Member Sequin and a second by Board Member Bax. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Sequin.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Abstained.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, Madam Superintendent, do you have a Superintendent report for us this evening?
I do. First of all, I'd just like to thank everyone and kind of echo Mr. Bax for the opening of the school year. It was, as we all know, a very unusual year to open, kind of how we ended. But opening three new buildings and keeping the old ones with new boundaries, I think the staff did a phenomenal job. Couldn't ask for more. Very, very proud of everything that went on. And we kind of gave the staff a gift, because we think they're all superheroes, and we didn't want to leave you out. So Amy has a superhero gift for you. It's a super E, and she's going to explain what that means. I think you've probably seen some pictures around.
Here we are.
Nice.
Super E shirts. We have these made, as Amy said, for opening day for our staff to represent the essential role that they play in the lives of children and in the community. Rather than use the word essential worker, we chose to tell them that they are, have a big deal. So that was, this is kind of the new fun thing in the district. Everybody's been sending me their superhero poses, and we've been posting them on social media. But we have an assortment of sizes for you to choose from after the meeting.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Did it the safe way. But we just wanted to include you as part of our team. So, thank you, and we thank so much of our staff, and we know they are superheroes to many of our students and families. Also, wanted to remind everyone, our pantries are starting for the year. They're going to be two Mondays of every month, and they're going to stay at the stadium because we still think they're going to be larger than usual. So we're not going to do them at Oakwood and Illyria High. So this Monday, the 20, is it the 21st already? Yes, it is. The 21st, they'll be out at the stadium from 4:00 to 6:00. And we have some exciting things coming up. Amy will have her come to a meeting coming up, stay in the game with the Browns is coming up. It's an attendance program with the Browns, and she's going to be reporting on that. But other than that, just, things are going well. We have a few kinks to iron out, but so far, so good. And we will look into the, maybe having some board meetings at the new buildings.
Okay.
I think that's the best way to show it when we can't have large groups there.
That'd be outstanding.
Yeah.
So since we have a small group here, how did, I'd be, I'd love to hear how everything went this year. Mr. B., you want to throw something out there? Your new digs over there, how did everything?
They are fantastic. I mean, you walk in there, and it is just gorgeous to look at. As Ms. Schloss said, we did have a few kinks, you know, we're dealing with a whole new traffic pattern. And when we had our soft opening, we looked at it, and we saw a way that we can improve it. Mr. Kokai came over and helped us out, and now, so we have it so that you can enter and exit off roachily.
Okay.
The soft opening was great, and we've got two days under our belt, and it's going very, very well.
Everybody's still walking around, kind of in awe, looking around.
Little bit, especially when you walk into our cafeteria and our gym, they are just fantastic. During all the meetings we've had, one of the things our staff said is, they were surprised at how well they're doing with the masks, how well the students are doing with the masks.
That's outstanding.
And we credit that to the families about just stressing it, and safety is a big thing. We're doing very well with that. But I won't take up any more time, because I'm sure Mr. Easton has something else.
You took it all, but no, yeah, so, eely, we opened up, the teachers absolutely love it, the staff love it. The students have been absolutely thrilled, to piggyback on what Mr. Fazinski was saying. I think we were almost surprised to the point where the kids are wearing the masks, and we're not really having to remind them so much. So the kids have been doing a great job with the masks, the teachers are modeling that. One great thing for us, so, the stagger start was awesome, because, for those of you who don't know, our parking lot, the car parking lot was not finished at the time, so we were running the cars through where the bus was at as well. The construction company was able to get that parking lot done for this coming Monday, so that was a big relief. So we were able to basically meet with our building logistics teams to plan out that car loop, so everything has been a success. The students absolutely love the campus. The parents love it from afar, of course, they want to be able to see it inside, so we have to show it to them virtually, but you guys will agree.
Great. Have you guys had the air conditioning on yet?
Oh, they've loved it. And then they have that little dial, actually, we were in one of the rooms today, and it's actually freezing, so we had to adjust it, so that's been something that they have not been used to for several years.
That's great, glad to hear it. Anybody else? How's that old, that really old school doing up there on the middle?
High school's doing great. It's almost dewy. It's strange when there's only about 600 kids coming in the building, and we're such a big campus, we can really spread out.
Wow.
Like, how about wood, like, there's no traffic down there at the start of school, 9:00? You can almost identify any car that goes by, but there's no traffic jam for school or at school.
Good, glad to hear it. Anybody else, everything good?
I'll just add, we have quite a few students that are participating in Virtual Academy, and that's been a shift for both staff, students, and parents, and I think they've done a great job. I've been in several rooms where they're teaching virtually, and it's different, and our teachers are having to be, they think very, have to think very differently. They've engaged students, they're doing a great job. Saying, we've had a few kinks, just making sure everyone's connecting, getting the hotspots out, but they've done a great job. So the Virtual Academy is new and a challenge, but I think our teachers are rising to that challenge, and we're getting better every day, and so that's been a big shift for us.
Good, glad to hear it.
How are we doing with subs?
We have 53 right now, and it's worked out so far, so, so far, so good. We're hoping that we get through, but 53 is pretty good from what we had a few weeks ago. So I would encourage everyone to take time to look. Elizabeth Weiss from AVG has been doing a new series with Amy called, "Did You Know?" And it's been on Facebook, but you get it also through district email, and I'll make sure that you get that forwarded to Board, that shows unique little things about the new buildings. And she's one of the architects from AVG, and it's kind of a fun little spin-off of the tours of the buildings. But that's been a neat, new thing that, just in the last week, I think, with Elizabeth.
Yep, we've done two segments so far, and they're geared to staff so that they can understand how to use their new spaces and some of the tricks that they may not know yet. And then the next part of it will be more geared toward community, so that they can see some of those things too.
Okay, great. Thanks for sharing, everybody. How is it from a mother perspective, anyone with children in the district?
I think that would be me only. Mine have not started in school, they go tomorrow, so Thursday, Friday, so I'm still a little confused this week, because I'm, like, I don't understand, and I've had parents ask me, like, did they need to check in Monday, Tuesday if they had no online class? Did they need to check in today? Because we haven't, really. So I don't know, you know, if they'll learn more tomorrow about that. But my daughter, she has five people in her class. she has five people in her class. This is crazy. She's going to Illyria High and she'll have five people.
Wow.
So, you know, it's, anybody that wanted a small classroom, they're getting it now.
Wow, that's great.
So, I'm actually excited for it, you know, to show a lot of one-on-one.
Okay.
So, I'll know more next meeting.
Okay.
Because they haven't really started yet.
Great, well, thanks for, thanks for sharing that. Okay, moving along on the agenda to the Board of Education. I will need a motion to approve the first reading of the following 15 board policies and regulations. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by board member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by board member Bax. Questions or comments? Just on the board docs, something's wrong with the file, you can only view the first page, so somebody may want to check into that, so you can
You can only view the first, first page of each one of these? Is that what you mean?
The whole thing.
Okay.
So, okay, do I have a motion to approve? Oh, I have the motions. Roll call, please, sorry.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Sequin?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we do not have an executive session for today, I believe, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other items for the good of the cause? With none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion by board member Bax. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by board member Sequin. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Sequin?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion carries, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.